All right, it is 10:03, so I think we can get started. My name's Erica Rogers. I'm gonna kick it off by sending it over to Molly first, but this is the public hearing for the rules governing common consumption areas.
All right, thank you, Erica. Hi, everybody. My name is Molly Dupla Shane. I'm the Deputy Director of Policy for the Department of Exisons and Licenses. And as Erica said, this is the hearing to consider the rules for liquor common consumption areas. And we'll also be talking about the hearing policies that will oversee these types of licenses as well. So thank you guys all for coming today. We're gonna have to jump in our time machines a little bit here and go back and review some of the work that we did over the last couple of years. This is work that Denver has been working on for several years, and it was actually adopted by the state like 10 or 11 years ago. And so it's exciting that Denver is now at this point where we're gonna be able to hopefully start accepting applications for this in the next couple of months. We did even leading up to adopting the ordinance, there was a lot of work that went into it, a lot of community outreach and a lot of stakeholder outreach. Erica will go through that timeline as a reminder of all the work that's been done. But obviously COVID interrupted that about a year ago. We were at this point where we would have been holding this hearing and put a pause on that just as a result of the public health restrictions likely not allowing for this type of business model. And then priorities getting refocused within our department onto other COVID-related issues. So we're happy to be back to this conversation now and appreciate all of your input and feedback that you're here to provide us today. This is an exciting new business opportunity and a new opportunity for communities as well. The whole idea behind this, offering this type of business model is community building and place making and bringing the community together in this type of business and economic environment. And so, but there's also at the same time, a lot of important protections built into both the ordinance and then these rules and hearing policies as well. So we want to make sure that these types of businesses go into communities that are wanting them and that those that aren't looking for this type of model have the voice to speak out and not have that option if it's not something that they're interested in. So along those lines, I'll pass it back to Erica. I'll be here to hear your feedback and questions. And it looks like we have a pretty small group, so hopefully we can get to some of those questions today. And then look forward to hearing your feedback. So thank you, and thank you, Erica.
All right, thanks, Molly. Let's see if I can, there we go. So just a quick overview of what we're gonna go over today. I'll start with some brief background information, including that history, what the licensing process looks like for one of these licenses, and talk a little bit about our liquor common consumption work group. Then we'll go into the main presentation where I'll go over the details of the role language that is the topic of this public hearing today. I'll also present some information that will highlight some of the hearing policies and procedures, both for common consumption areas as well as some changes that are being considered to modernize our hearing process. These rule provisions or policy provisions were, have been in use since we adopted our temporary hearing policies and procedures at the beginning of the pandemic. So we wanted to highlight some of those changes as well at this public hearing. We'll then have a brief time for questions. These questions will be limited to any clarifying questions about the rule language. Rhetorical questions about the, you know, policy reasons for adopting the license are not gonna be considered at this time. This is for clarifying questions only. And then at the end, we'll have public comments. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide their public comment on the role language as well as any insight on some of that hearing policy and procedure language. Both of these sections will be utilized through the raise hand feature. If we have anyone calling in on the phone who doesn't have that raise hand feature, you can email me, erica.rogers@denver.gov.org there on the screen. So that's the overview of what we're gonna do today. This brief history, like Molly said, the state legislature adopted a common consumption statute in 2011, so 10 years ago, with other jurisdictions operating and adopting their local ordinances. Between 2013 and 2019, Denver monitored those other jurisdictions to see how common consumption was working. Typically, those other Colorado jurisdictions were smaller than Denver, and so their regulations were tailored to those jurisdictions' needs. In late 2019, Denver City Council approved a pilot program for Denver to start issuing common consumption area licenses. And like Molly said, that ordinance has a significant amount of protections to ensure that this license is an amenity both for neighborhoods that are looking for this type of business as well as the businesses that want to offer it. In early 2020, our department convened our liquor common consumption rulemaking work group comprised of a bunch of different folks who provided input on the rules that the ordinance mandated that the department pass. And like Molly said, that work got put on hold. So here we are in 2021, about a year later, picking up that work to adopt those rules so that we can start accepting applications. As a reminder, this is what the proposed licensure process is going to look like. As many of our other liquor licenses and our marijuana licenses, it will look fairly similar. We'll start with an application that will include materials for promotional association certification, common consumption area boundaries, and if necessary, the boundaries of the entertainment district. That application will then be reviewed internally for completeness. We will have our internal partners helping us ensure that the applicant has all the required materials as we begin. And that application will be set for a public hearing. Like with other liquor and marijuana licenses, that public hearing will be for needs and desires to issue that license. And then there's an additional step if that application would be the first in an area that does not have an established entertainment district. If that's the case, it would go to city council to review and adopt a resolution allowing the creation of that entertainment district. And then that license would go through the inspection process to ensure that all required permits and qualifications are met. Those inspections would take place with agencies like Community Planning and Development, Fire Department, Public Health and Environment, and of course, Exisons and Licenses. Once all those inspections are complete, Exis would issue the CCA license to that certified promotional association. A quick word of thanks to our liquor common consumption work group members. The members here are listed on the right-hand side, and as you can see, it's a mix of the internal partners, both in our Office of Special Events, the Department of Public Health and Environment, our City Attorney's Office, Police, Fire, DOD, all of those internal partners, as well as external partners in our RNOs and IMC, as well as some bids and some private businesses. We also had representation from city council, from city council District 10 on the work group. We met three times in early February, so if you want to refresh your memory or see any of the materials that the group considered, those are all available on our website. Now we'll get into the main presentation. This part of the presentation will cover the rule language for common consumption areas. We'll discuss the ordinance authorization for each section, and then we'll go through the role language that is associated. So the first two sections of our rules are the definitions and authorization language. And then the first substantive section of the rules is Section 3. In the DRMC ordinance, it requires that an application for common consumption areas need to include a health and sanitation plan. So in rule, we're setting the requirements that need to be included in that health and sanitation plan when the applicant submits their application. So it has to include at least two things, three if they're gonna have a cabaret. So the first two are a description of any retail food licenses that are at the location. The second is a description of the applicant's emergency and medical disaster preparedness plan. And then if the applicant is applying for either a permanent or temporary cabaret license, this plan will also need to have a description of any noise sources. Those typically include amplified audio or mechanical noise, anywhere that's gonna be utilized for a temporary area, where it's gonna be located, and some other details that will help our noise inspections make sure that the cabaret is not gonna be a burden to the neighborhood. The next section of the rules is a parking and transportation plan. The DRMC requires that the application also include a parking and transportation plan. So that's going to have to include some things detailed on the right here. So the minimum requirements of this plan are going to include a description of how the common consumption area is going to be accessible for patrons, a description of a proposed parking plan, a description of how patrons are going to be prevented from exiting and driving under the influence of alcohol, a description of any public transportation options that are available near the common consumption area, a description to ensure that any parking will be available for residents if a street closure would affect the typical parking available to those residents in the area, and then a description of the physical barriers that will be used to close the area to motor vehicle traffic, limit pedestrian access, and inform patrons of the boundaries. This is a state statutory requirement, so it will be just a reminder that it needs to be included in the parking and transportation plan. Now, we also understand that different types of CCAs may have different features available to the patrons. So obviously, these are just some starting points for the things that the applicant should consider as they are working through that plan, depending on, you know, whether there will be street closures or not. The next section talks about the security and admission control plan. In the DRMC, it is also required that the applicant submit a security and admission control plan, which should include the following minimum requirements. The first is a procedure for either removal or ejection of any intoxicated persons from the area. The second is a listing of any procedures that ensure alcohol beverages that are purchased in the attached licenses will not be removed from the common consumption area. The third is procedures for ensuring that underage patrons won't be able to obtain alcohol within the common consumption area. The fourth is any procedures that will be used by the staff, vendors, security personnel to be able to differentiate between patrons who are under 21 or over 21. These sometimes include wristbands, hand stamps, other procedures, things like that. And finally, a description of any security personnel who will be staffing the event and where they'll be stationed. These security and admission control plan procedures are very similar to what is expected from events at the National Western Center as well. The next section of the rules, Section 6, discusses license display requirements. In the DRMC, there is a provision in ordinance that allows the director to make reasonable rules and regulation that affect the licensing and operation of common consumption areas. So for parallel regulations with our other liquor licenses, these provisions discuss the requirements for displaying a license. So the first being that the promotional association is going to be required to provide copies of the license to each attached licensee. That way, they can display those licenses alongside their either underlying liquor license or special event permit for each attached licensee. Like other liquor licenses and many other licenses that the department issues, the licensee will also be required to produce that copy of that license if they are asked for inspection by law enforcement or state or city inspectors. And finally, those licensees will not be able to allow alcohol beverages to leave their licensed premise unless they have that license displayed. Section 7 of the rules covers insurance. In the ordinance, the city council required that a common consumption area licensee application should include proof of liability insurance and authorize the director to set those limits. The work group looked at various other jurisdictions and chose to align with all of those other jurisdictions in requiring a minimum limit of $1 million in liability insurance, combined single limit for bodily injury and property damage for each occurrence, and to name the city as the additional insured. In this section, the city is also requiring that promotional associations submit current certificates of insurance, not just at the time of application, but also with each renewal. In addition, no insurance policy shall be reduced, suspended, voided, or canceled without prior written notice to the department. And any change to the insurance policy must be submitted within 72 hours to the department. Any failure to maintain or follow these restrictions about insurance may result in automatic suspension. Section 8 of the rules covers material and substantial changes, alterations, or modifications to the common consumption area. So in the DRMC, the ordinance requires that licensees obtain approval from the director before making any physical changes to their common consumption area. And if the director finds that the proposed change is material and substantial, that a public hearing be held on the modification. This is similar to other liquor licenses. So in Section 8, the rules list some certain types of physical changes or alteration that may be included in that determination are increases in the size or capacity of the common consumption area, the addition of a cabaret license to a CCA that does not previously have one, or any structural changes, including the addition of a stage, changes in the max capacity of patrons, installation of special electrical features or installations that may require additional permitting by city agencies. So that concludes the rule language that is the topic of the public hearing. Those are the rules that are being considered, and we will take public comments on those at the end. This phase of the presentation will cover some of the hearing policies and procedures that are related to common consumption areas. When we were doing outreach about the ordinance, we got a lot of questions from community members and city council members and businesses and residents about details that would be in the hearing policies and procedures. So what we promised to those folks with the questions was that we would go over the changes proposed to the hearing policies and procedures at the role hearing so that the public could weigh in on some of those features and provide their feedback. These policies and procedures were also considered by the rulemaking work group. So first, some changes to Article 1. I will note that all of Article 1 still applies to common consumption areas. These particular sections within Article 1 are the provisions that are changing. So in Section 1.2, we added some new definitions for certified promotional association, common consumption area license, entertainment district designation. And we also made some updates to the applicant and licensee definitions just to ensure consistency and clarity. In Section 1.2, we updated the parties and interest definition to include the party and interest definition for common consumption areas. In definition, there's currently a chart, so that has been added. So the following parties may testify, present evidence, and cross-examine witnesses in common consumption area hearings. That will include applicants, RNO members, school principals, residents of the designated area, and business owners and managers for businesses within the designated area. With other liquor licenses, city council may give unweighted testimony and present evidence. As with Article 1, Article 2 also applies to all common consumption area hearings. This article covers needs and desires hearings. But these two provisions will be different as a result of the common consumption area additions. So in Section 2.1.4, notification to other parties, there will be added language that requires the department to send a notice packet for common consumption area license hearings to any RNO whose boundaries overlap a portion of the designated area, any city council members whose districts overlap that area, and the Denver Public School representative for that area. This is the same group of parties who receive a notice packet for other liquor hearings. In Section 2.1.6, that covers the notice signs, posting notices, notice signs and posting. So a posting sign for common consumption area license hearings must be placed in a conspicuous place at each business that is participating in the common consumption area. Obviously, for other liquor hearings, there is only one notice sign required at the location that is requesting the liquor license. So to be parallel with the intent of that policy, we are requiring each business participating to post that notice. Article 22 is a new article that you'll see in the hearing policies and procedures, and it will cover hearings for new common consumption area licenses. Some main features to point out within this article are the setting of the hearing, the posting requirements, standards for certification, and the standards for issuance. So for setting the hearing, the HPPs require that the director schedule a public hearing not less than 60 days from the application. This is also an ordinance, but we're putting it here as well to remind folks that there is that 60-day window between the date of application and the soonest date that they could have a hearing. The posting requirements are also listed here, and the licensee must post that notice of the hearing for a minimum of 30 days prior to the hearing. The standards for certifying a promotional association are restated in this section from state statute as are the standards for issuing a common consumption area license. As a reminder, the needs and desires hearing will cover both that promotional association certification as well as the issuance of the license. A few things to note here that are not changing. The way that the designated area is determined will be the same for this license as it is for all other licenses, as well as the procedures for requesting a modification to that designated area. The other thing that will remain the same are petitions. Collection of petition processes will remain the same for common consumption area licenses as well. Article 23 of the hearing policies and procedures will cover renewal hearings for those common consumption area licenses. So starting with the note that hearings are not automatic, as with other renewal hearings for liquor licenses, the director has authority to hold a renewal hearing based on relevant and substantial written complaints about the license. If the director does choose to hold a hearing, the director will issue an order and notify the licensee of the hearing at least 10 days before that hearing. If the licensee is subject to a renewal hearing, they must post that notice for a minimum of 10 days prior to the hearing. And just like with a new license, the standards for non-recertification or denial of renewal are restated in the HPPs from state statute. The last new article is Article 24, and this will cover hearings for modifications of those licenses. As with other license, it notes that any license seeking a material and substantial modification must have approval from the director as well as the state liquor enforcement division prior to making that modification on forms that are supplied by the department. As we mentioned earlier, material and substantial includes any increase to the total size or capacity of the common consumption area, changes to ingress and egress that would alter where the area, alter the area where alcohol beverages are allowed to be consumed within the CCA, the addition or deletion of an outdoor patio area, or any changes that affect the basic premise, the character of the structure that would affect the plans and permits needed by the licensee. As noted, if the director determines that the proposed modification is material and substantial, a hearing is required, similar to other liquor licenses. If that hearing is required, the applicant must post notice of the public hearing for a minimum of 30 days. And the standards for approval of that modification that are listed in state statute and the DRMC are restated in the hearing policies and procedures. One other note I'd like to make is that Sections or Articles, excuse me, 20 and 21 regarding the denial of licenses and show causes of licenses will also apply as written. This last part of the presentation is going to cover hearing policy and procedures related to hearing modernization. And these policies and procedure amendments that are outlined in the memo on our website are changes that we are looking to make permanent after about a year of temporary use by the department to facilitate virtual hearings and generally bring our hearing process up to speed with the needs of our residents and businesses, both during and post-pandemic. So this section will cover some of those. Some of the modifications to the requirements include the authorization of virtual hearings and cameras to be used for facilitation of those virtual hearings. There will also be a permanent authorization for remote participation as allowed by the director. As you can see, most of our licenses do currently allow for virtual testimony and have since May 1st. The new licenses that we are talking about today, including new common consumption areas, renewals of common consumption areas, and modification of common consumption areas will be added to the list of licenses where virtual testimony is permitted. Provisions regarding continuances are being considered for permanent inclusion. One is that the 1.6.3.9.1 allows a hearing officer or the director to continue a hearing for the purposes of accommodating opposition. This provision includes opposition both to the underlying application as well as opposition to virtual participation, as long as that opposition is voiced by a party and interest. In keeping with our permanent, or excuse me, our modernization requirements, we are looking to waive the requirement that an applicant provide four hard copies of all exhibits if they're gonna be participating in a remote hearing. Finally, the last provision that we're looking to add to modernize our hearings is to provide some clarity about the role of good neighbor agreements. This was a topic that was discussed at the liquor common consumption rulemaking hearing. So Section 1.6.5.7 will state that conditions may be placed on a license to ensure that the licensee will operate lawfully or to incorporate the specific and enforceable provisions of a good neighbor agreement. The other modifications that we're looking to make to modernize our hearing process is to update some of the deadlines that are in our policies and procedures. We've been testing most of these for the last year to allow folks more flexibility with the virtual hearings and provide more time for them to comply with the policies and procedures. So the first deadline that we'll be reducing is the request for interpreter services. So in 1.6.3.8, it states that any applicant, licensee, party and interest, or city attorney may make a request for a foreign language interpreter for any hearing. Previously, that request had to be made 10 days before the hearing. We're reducing that timeline to five days before the hearing. The next modification is to the timeline for requesting a change to the designated area. So as I mentioned earlier, any party and interest may request that the director modify an established designated area for a needs and desires hearing. So if an RNO, for example, gets a notice, notification packet, and they look at the designated area for a particular application, and they think that it's not quite appropriate for the needs of that neighborhood, they can make that request in writing with the reasons listed why they think that designated area should be modified. Previously, that request had to be made no later than 10 days after the date that the notice had been posted. And that is now reduced to five days. The next area that has modified timelines is for requesting an evening hearing. So previously, Section 2.2.2 for needs and desires hearings stated that any request for an evening hearing has to contain at least 15 signatures from parties and interest and be submitted at least 15 days prior to the scheduled hearing date. That provision is gonna be changed to reduce that, the obligation of that request. So now the request must only have to contain five signatures and be submitted at least five days prior to the scheduled hearing date. During COVID, we actually waived the requirement that any signatures be collected all, at all, in order to During COVID, we actually waived the requirement that any signatures be collected all, at all, in order to encourage social distancing. But as we're moving to a more permanent standard, we think that five signatures is reasonable and returns to the original intent of the provision. In addition, that section also requires that any posting signs inform the public of the process for requesting an evening hearing. Finally, for the posting duration, previously, the notice signs had to be posted for a minimum of 20 days. That was more than what is required in state law. So to align with state law, we are proposing that the minimum now be set at 10 days for new liquor, liquor renewals, liquor mods, and new marijuana. Of course, the director may always specify in an order a longer period for posting. However, that minimum is going to be aligned with the state. So that was a lot of information about the rules hearing that is the topic of the public hearing today, as well as the additional information about hearing policies and procedures that the department is considering along with that. So this section of the presentation will be for clarifying questions only. We won't be accepting questions about the reasoning for city council adopting the ordinance or anything like that. It will clearly be, or solely be to clarify any questions about any of the provisions we've talked about today. So if anyone listening in has such a question, please feel free to use the raise hand feature. Okay, it looks like we've got Andy Utes, who was on our rulemaking committee. So Andy, I am going to make you a panelist. You might see a brief break while I promote you, so don't, don't leave. Just hang on real tight, and it'll give you the opportunity to speak. All right, it looks like the promotion to panelist has worked, and if you want to unmute your microphone, you'll be able to ask your question.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, there's a couple of references in what you sent out, in the whole thing, to evidence of neighborhood or community support or a lack thereof. What would constitute those in a positive other than a GNA? And what would be negative evidence of community support?
That's a good question. Reggie, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Hi, Andy. So for, I believe that the ordinance requires, and I'm pulling it up again. The ordinance actually explains what evidence of community support means. In addition to a GNA, it would also include a letter of community support or non-opposition, a document indicating community support or non-opposition. It could also include any other evidence of community support that's deemed sufficient by the director. I think that that would, that's really intended to be a catchall to, to make those things broader. If there are other things that bids or registered neighborhood organizations want to submit, they can, they could let the director know. And we could, you know, on a case-by-case basis, you know, they can make a determination on whether or not that would be sufficient. As far as evidence of non-community support, I don't believe that that's a requirement underneath the ordinance that could, so I don't really have a good answer of what, what that would look like.
Yeah, and to clarify, you know, the evidence of community support is a requirement to have a complete application, so they would at least have to provide that support upon application. However, that doesn't prevent the licensee from later, or from a hearing officer later determining at the needs and desires hearing that there is not a need and desire in the neighborhood. So I think that that may be where your question comes in, Andy. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, there's a thing on page seven. It says the applicant or licensee fails to establish or maintain evidence of community support. That to me is, is the negative and
Right, so I guess the answer would be that if we received, you know, a, a letter from the the registered neighborhood organization that had originally given their community support, if we received a letter from them saying we no longer support this, this business or this RNO, or sorry, not, not RNO, this commu, this common consumption area. You know, that could, it could look like that. It could look like plenty of other things, though, depending on what, what the organization wants to, wants to provide to the department.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's an opportunity for the RNO who provided their initial support to, you know, revoke that support if the, you know, if, if the, if the, you know, applicant is not living up to the terms that were agreed to, right, if they provided their support at the beginning.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised for a question, and I do not believe I've gotten any emails from callers. I don't think there are any callers. I think everyone is on Zoom. So if there are no further questions, we will move to the next part of the presentation, which is the public comment section. So again, if you have a public comment, you want to make a, a statement about your thoughts or feelings about any of the rules that are under consideration, anything you want the department to consider, please raise your hand, and we will give you two minutes and promote you to a panelist. Okay, seeing no hands raised for public comment, I will note that if you think of something later, you can email your written comments to licenses@denvergov.org. The deadline is today, so please get those in. If you have any additional comments you'd like to make about the rule language, and this will be considered by the department as part of the official process for adopting the rules. With that, Molly, if you'd like to close the hearing, I'll kick it back over to you.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention one other thing to Erica. So I'm sorry if I jumped ahead of you on this or messed this up at all, but I did want to mention while we have this audience that we are, you know, the ordinance does include, right now, that the license becomes effective 90 days after passage of the ordinance, or I'm sorry, after adoption of the rules. And we are considering taking an amendment to city council to amend that to the 45, to 45 days so that we can start accepting applications sooner than the 90 days. And the reason for that is that, you know, there was, we, we intended to do this a year ago, and when we did that, we needed some time to be able to build out the technology to be able to accept the application. And we have since done that in the lull while we had some technology resources over the last year when we were not actually working on this license. And so we have the applications and the technology ready to accept applications, so we don't need that, that 90-day implementation period that we had originally dedicated. And so while we have an audience, I thought I might just get feedback on that, but if there, you know, are no concerns from council or public, then that is something that we are considering running through city council, which would make it so that applications could likely be available to get, start getting submitted sometime maybe in July sometime. So I guess we can just see if there's any hands that get raised from that, and if there's any feedback on that piece. That's not a part of this official hearing today, but just looking for feedback as we move into that quick amendment to the ordinance.
And I'm not seeing any hands raised, but please do know you can email us at licenses@denvergov.org with that feedback. You can also email me directly if you prefer. We will be, you know, there's no deadline on that. But we will be, you know, moving forward with that pretty quickly.
All right. Well, thank you guys so much for attending today. And as Erica said, we are always available. You know, if you have additional questions that come up later and you want to reach out, or if you have public comment, you can email that email address as well, and we'll be taking that feedback into consideration before adoption of these rules. So we're excited for this opportunity and looking forward to seeing how this all plays out, and thank you guys so much for your help.
Yes, thank you all for coming today.